Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of June 27, 2024. This is meeting is a hybrid meeting. It's being conducted in person and as a Zoom meeting. And for the record, the meeting ID is 890-6517-5504. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Catherine Schlichty, James Gelotti, Mike Nyman is online, and Ron, yeah, I'm sorry. I was drawing a blank there. Ronald Wilson is with us. So we have five, and I declare a quorum. Did everyone get minutes of 6:13? No, I didn't think, okay. All right. So tonight, we're gonna, we're shuffling the order a little bit. First, we have a request on the petition of Kenneth Anson and Brian Revoto, trustees of the Ronald M. Anson Trust, on 21 Rear Bungalow Road. We had a request to withdraw without prejudice. I believe Attorney Ellison's on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. With regard to the Anson petition, they would like to withdraw without prejudice. They have decided that they are no longer going to sell it for development purposes, so they have no need for this application.
Okay, thank you. We'll need a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
I can make that motion, withdraw without prejudice, for 21 Rear Bungalow Road.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. All set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're gonna skip a couple of the continued hearings till later in the meeting, and we're gonna go to new applications. First up is the petitioner Joseph Frontero, seeking to modify a variance, 1.7.4, previously granted in 2004, to deviate from 2007 plans in accordance with the decision in Frontero versus City of Gloucester at all at 8 Mount Vernon Street.
Board, my name is Joseph Frontero. I'm the owner of 8 Mount Vernon Street. And here tonight to do is to move a variance that was granted back in 2004 by pulling the room back three feet.
So the, the, the application is correctly written up to modify a variance. We have no legal power to withdraw a variance that's been granted. There's, there's no, nothing in the law that would allow us to do that. But you are here to ask to modify the variance. So if you want to touch on what you're gonna do different from the registered plan of 2007, go ahead.
So what you're asking me to do is to modify the sunroom by pulling it back three feet, is that correct?
I'm not asking you to do anything. You're asking us to modify the variance.
In my paperwork, I just stated that I was here to pull back the wall three feet to meet the seven-and-a-half-foot setback on my property. That's what I'm proposing to do. If that's what you call modifying it, taken away. I'm not adding to it. I'm removing the wall by pulling it in.
But the variance was as much to do with, you were going up.
No, has nothing to do with that at this meeting.
Oh, it does have to do with it, because when you have a variance, and then you want to build above the variance, you have to ask to modify the variance. The variance doesn't give you, gives you a footprint right, but it doesn't give you an unlimited height right. You approved, you approved a plan back then, and you went beyond it. And it isn't just to do with the side yard setback. It was, it was the mass of the expansion. And I defer, Michael, you've been here a long time. And I've been here on a couple of them, so I'm trying to figure out what we can legally do. Any thoughts?
Can, can we just get a little history of what happened here? Because I don't, we don't, do we have the 2007 plan that approved that variance? It was just a variance to build a deck? Or a single-story space off the first, you know, off the first floor? That's, yeah. We have the current proposal, but I don't know what the 2007...
2004 variance was for a sunroom, a four-season room, built on a pre-existing deck. It went into, which was, I was granted, a three-foot side variance. In that side variance now, I want to relieve that by pulling the wall back to meet seven-and-a-half-foot variance, by cutting it back three feet. Very simple. Has nothing to do with asking to build or do anything else other than to remove the wall, pull it in, and relieve the variance, record it at the Registry of Deeds, that it was, it's registered now as a seven-and-a-half-foot setback. So I'm not asking to build anything.
So, Joe, so Joe, yeah, Michael Nyman here. So why does he, why does he need our permission to not build that wall three feet further out? I don't understand.
It's already there. Built it.
Okay, but if he, but if he removes it back, why does he need our permission to do that? It's an honest question.
What brought us here was proof of the sunroom. But then, you might have remembered some of the site visits, he started to build above the sunroom.
Yep.
And that's when they stopped him.
Yep.
That's still sitting framed, uncompleted. So when he wanted to go up, that's when we had asked him to come back and modify the variance then, in like 2017. But didn't approve it. He appealed to court, and the court ruled we did the right thing. And now we're back, properly should be asking to modify the variance. Whether or not, I mean, what are your intentions for what you got up above?
We have a deck on top there that's framed. That frame started back in 2007. The plate was there. I had a cancer surgery. I stopped building the deck. So Father was the mayor back then, and she says, when you get better, come back to the board, and then they'll grant you the permit to complete the deck. So I didn't go back, because I've been... Deck now stands framed. It has, during the lawsuit, that deck had nothing to do with the sunroom and the variance. We didn't need a variance for the deck. The deck conforms to all setbacks, state and local. It doesn't need anything. All it needs is a permit.
Reason you needed a variance and to modify the variance was because you can't just, just because it meets the setbacks, you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot.
Correct.
Any time to make a change to that. You came before the board. They granted you the permission to build the sunroom here, a variance. And then you started building on top of the sunroom. And that's where you got stopped, because that was a violation of variance. He was heard here and denied to alter the variance, and that's when it went to court. So understanding in what you needed to do.
Okay, then, what I propose is that, what does the board want me to do to finish this deck? What do I need to do? Remodify the variance? I don't want to modify a variance. I want to remove the variance.
No legal way to remove a variance. There's no authority to do that. We have no legal authority under 42 to remove a variance. It doesn't exist.
So what you're saying to me is, if that room caught fire and burned, and I decided to rebuild it, and I built it back with the seven-and-a-half-foot setback, that I would still have a variance?
Sure, it would exist. Goes with the land forever, once you get a variance.
So I, I want to go back again, just a honest question. I guess this would be to, not sure who this is too, but why can't he just move, remove that structure like he's talking about, you know, getting rid of the variance? Would he then, we've already given him permission to go as far as he is, is that correct? Just not above?
Yeah. It, what kicked out was when he started building above the room on the bottom. And that required to modify a variance, but he chose not to go that way. That would have been a sensible thing in 2007 or whatever.
So is he, is his modification of his variance asking us to approve his deck above? Is that where we're at?
That's what he's asking to be able to finish, yep.
Correct.
And that would be the modification to the variance. It's nothing about taking three feet off. It's about, it's about, we have not given him permission to do anything above that sunroom.
Sure.
But he built anyway, and has fought it for 10, 15 years.
So he's, so this is a question again. So is he, or essentially, are we encouraging him in the language of this modification to modify the previous variance with, so that he can, with the idea that he would build this deck on top of it? That's, is that the addition that he's asking for, for the modification of the variance?
Right. And that's why it was written up to say modify.
Sure.
Even though the application asked to remove it.
Sure.
The city legal knew that we couldn't do that, but that we could modify. Now, the issue about modifying the variance or granting this variance is, what's the hardship?
Yeah.
A lot being too small is not a hardship.
Yeah.
So would a variance, he can apply for that tonight, and then we can weigh it, and people can weigh in.
Sure.
And I think that's where you should head.
Yep.
But I just wanted to be clear upfront, we cannot remove a variance, but he can apply to modify the variance tonight.
So I'm just curious, I mean, just in the conversation, how would removing the variance, I know that we can't do it, but how would that help him, I guess?
Well, he's under the impression if he pulls it back, he could continue building up above. That's where the misunderstanding's been all these years.
He would still, he would still need to come to us for permission to build above, right?
I agree.
Even if the variance wasn't there, right?
I agree. But that's not what's happened.
Let me stop you, excuse me. Why would I need to come back and ask for something from the zoning board if the deck complies to all the setbacks? That's what I'm not seeing here.
Because you're altering and expanding a non-conforming structure. It fires you to come to us.
So would he need a special permit for that, Joe?
Well, because a variance was granted for the footprint that he wants to build above.
Sure, sure.
It was ruled it had to be a modification of a variance.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So that's where we're at, right? That's where we're at.
The variance is for what's sitting there.
Yep.
And I don't think there's any problem with the footprint. To build above it, right, as we've always ruled, you're increasing the nonconformity, and you have to amend, to build anything different than what was stamped back originally, you have to amend the variance.
Sure.
We found that out. And that's what he should be applying for. Again, he has to tell us what he wants to build, and make us, make a case for why he should be able to do that. What's the hardship?
So the hardship on this, what you, we're talking, you're talking about a hardship here. During the pandemic, right, we have no land, no yard around the house. I, not one of you people come out there to look at it. Maybe Barbara Carrey's been out there. But during the pandemic...
I have photos. That's, that's an unfair and unreasonable statement. I have probably 15, you just made a statement that's not true. I took 15 photos of that rear area, so...
Now? For this meeting, excuse me?
For this meeting.
Who was out on my property?
I was not on your property. I was on neighboring properties.
Okay, all right. But anyway, the, getting back to it, what you want me to do is modify that variance again. We've tried that here, and you refused it the last time.
And it was turned down.
Okay. So I don't understand why you're saying to me that you want me to show a hardship to do that. I don't have any pro, I don't have a yard.
If you're gonna apply to modify the variance, you have to show hardship for us to approve it. The reason we turned you down before was that wasn't the case. There's no, hardship is owing to the shape, topography, soil conditions of the lot. Not just because it's too small, and not just because you want to keep building up. And you were turned down for the variance, and you chose to take it to court. And you lost. So now you're back asking again. And if it hadn't been a few years, we wouldn't have even entertained this tonight. But you have a right to petition over and over. And you're here to petition, so tell us what you want to build. And that means the deck that shouldn't be there, that he could order you tomorrow to take it off, and, which should have happened years ago. And then we'll, we'll take testimony, we'll listen to the neighbors, and we'll, we'll decide whether or not we think you deserve a variance.
Joe, listen, I'm done with this. I'm done with it.
I can't hear him speaking, Joe.
I'm sorry. This, this whole thing hasn't been fair to us for four years. We've been putting up with this stuff for four years, and I'm done with it. I, I don't want to do it anymore. I've had it. I should just build that deck, tell the City of Gloucester, take me to Land Court, and have the city and the court tell me why they connected that deck with that sunroom. It has nothing to do with each other. Back in 2007 and 2004, when it was built, the deck wasn't part of the variance at all. I applied for another permit. Building inspector issued me a permit to build that deck. Then the legal department jumped back in and put a stop work order on it. It cost me $8,000 more because of the building department telling me to go get a survey, $5,800, an architect, Jason Goze, another $2,300, and other plans that were done for that. And now you're telling me that they're connected, and you want me to modify it. I'm not gonna modify it. It has nothing to do with the sunroom. So if the city wants to take me to court, so be it. Take me to court, take me to Land Court. But you can't tell me, I can't continue on a deck that conforms to all the building aspects.
Don't have a permit to build that.
It doesn't, I did have a permit.
Issued in error.
I still have it.
Issued in error and revoked.
Issued in error?
Yeah.
Well, no one said that to me.
Oh, sure they did. I've read the back and forth.
I just thought a stop work order, that was it. To stop doing what I was doing until we straightened it out. And it's obvious that this board don't want it straightened out.
Mr. Frontero?
Yes.
Ronald Wilson?
I go on.
There are rules that were established to govern how things can be built in different properties, and they have to be applied evenly. And the rules, you're arguing that you don't like the rules.
No, I'm not.
And...
I understand them fully.
Okay, well...
We're getting real...
What happens, what happens when you're a little leaguer, and you don't like the way the umpire calls balls and strikes? Okay?
Yeah.
What you're doing is you're arguing balls and strikes. We have tried to show you a pathway forward, and you want to take your ball and go home. So the pathway forward is you have to understand that anything you build on that property, because it is a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot, you have to come in and ask for a variance.
That's all.
Are withdrawing the application, okay? If you're not gonna speak, then we can't hear it. So we'll have a motion to allow withdrawal of the application at 8 Mount Vernon.
I'd like to make a motion to reject the application before us from Joseph Frontero, Mr. and Mrs. Maria and Joseph Frontero, because the applicant is showing no respect for the process.
No, that's not how we do it. That's not a legitimate, he's refusing to present his application, therefore, we're not gonna hear it. I would like us to vote, who's, by his actions, he's withdrawn his application. Not willing to present to the board, he's withdrawn his application. Yep. You're not on.
I can make that motion.
Okay, Michael, thank you.
Petitioner Joseph Frontero, seeking to modify variance 1.7.4, previously granted in 2004, to deviate from 2007 plans in accordance with the decision in Frontero versus City of Gloucester, 8 Mount Vernon Street. I would move that we allow the applicant to withdraw his application without prejudice.
Second. Motion made and seconded to withdraw. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
I abstain.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. That's withdrawn. Next hearing is the petitioner Linda Esposito, seeking a special permit, 1.9 and 2.4.4, to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single-family home on a non-conforming lot and replace with a conforming single-family home. Special permits 1.10.1 and 3.1.6, to increase the building height to 35 feet at 57 Rear Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Good evening. Sal Frontero, 46 Middle Street, for the petitioner Linda Esposito. And also with me is the contractor, Jason Camps, if you have any questions on that. This site is located in East Gloucester, in the R10 zoning district. It's on a 7,900 square, 962-square-foot lot. It contains a one-bath, one-bedroom cottage that was built around 1958. The home on the site is presently non-conforming as a side yard setback and rear yard setback. And the rebuild, as stated, would eliminate all nonconformities, but would create for the first time a height nonconformity up to 35 feet. Site was formerly part of the property in front at 57 Mount Pleasant. And in 1980, this board authorized the division of the property under the predecessor of what is now Section 3.1.5. And in looking at that, the dimensional requirements, as an effect in 1980, it's clear that the lot as created did not comply with the dimensional requirements. But again, it did not have to. As this, as the new building will occupy more of the lot and increase lot coverage from 13.4% to 19%, it'll still be under the maximum lot coverage allowed. However, given the situation that we have, a already undersized lot, an argument can be made that any increase in bulk would require a special permit to alter and expand. So that is why I'm asking for that today. Occupying more of it, more of a lot that's already nonconforming, and well below the 25%. So as the special permit to alter and expand, this board must make a finding that the, the rebuilt home is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing situation. And also, before, with a single and two-family as here, before making that determination, this board must first determine whether what is happening is increasing the nonconformity. If it is not, then no special permit is necessary. Again, I think this board's policy is, and I tend to agree with it, that any increase in footprint on an undersized lot would, would make it more, would increase the nonconformity, because the lot's already undersized. So I think we do move on to the second prong of the test as to whether it is substantial or detrimental to the neighborhood. And I would submit it is not. Again, we're going from a conforming building, a non-conforming building to a conforming building. The house is also not viewable from the street. If you did a site visit, you probably had trouble, would have trouble finding it without the sign. It was very hard to find. It's hidden behind 57, and all but the, perhaps the very top of it will be viewable from the street. And also, the petitioner delayed filing this, so she had time to talk to the immediate abutters, and all were fine with it. And she also reached out to the abutters of the abutters on the abutters list, and nobody expressed any opposition. So based on the fact that the structure will become conforming, it will not be viewable from the street, I would, I would submit that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. As to the special permit to exceed maximum allowable, maximum allowable building height, up to 35 feet, this, this board is authorized to issue such a special permit, and with such conditions as it deems necessary, and it only issue upon a written determination that such increase in allowable height is consistent with neighborhood character and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of views, overshadowing of other, other properties, or impairment utilities, or other adverse impacts. So for the same reasons stated for the special permit to alter and expand, I would submit that this, that this permit should issue as well. As far as obstruction of views, it's, again, it's behind another building. It's not, the other houses are all close to the street. The same applies to the overshadowing. To the extent this is gonna cast shadows in either direction, to the east is the former East Gloucester School vacant lot with a lot of open space. And the properties to the west are all located near the street. So any, any casting of shadows from east to west will not affect these properties at all. Also, I'm unaware of any other impairment utilities or any other adverse impacts. So I would say that based on these circumstances, the height, special permit should issue as well. And how's that for brief? I'm done.
Any questions at this time of the applicant? We'll go to public testimony. When we have public testimony, if people in the audience, you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and, and state your feelings. If you're on Zoom watching the meeting, you hit your raised hand button on your device. If you're on a phone, you dial star nine, and we'll be able to see who's asking to join the meeting. With that in mind, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Favor, please come forward or raise your hand. On, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Forward or raise your hand. Anyone in opposition? No one, there'll be no need for rebuttal. Yeah, I agree, it's, isn't increasing nonconformity per our norm, so we won't have that. So it will be the special permit to demolish and replace, special permit for the height.
On the petitioner Linda Esposito, seeking a special permit to alter, expand a nonconforming structure, and to demolish a pre-existing single-family home on a nonconforming lot, and to replace it with a new, a conforming single-family home in terms of setbacks, and a special permit to increase the building height to 35 feet, I would move approval for all the relief requested. I do think that you do need a special permit to alter, expand, because even though the building is completely within the setback, I do think you're intensifying the nonconformity, because you're, you got more lot coverage there. And, but I don't think it's substantially more detrimental than what exists there now. Primarily in a lot of ways, because where it's located, it's not, I think for, I also, that it will not create any overshadowing or with the requested height. And I would move approval for that as well.
I would second on both motions, both special permits.
Okay, well, motion made and seconded on both special permits. We'll vote them as one. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Gelotti?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Mr. Parisi?
Also vote yes, for decisions favorable. Draft to speed up the process.
Thank you.
Next petition is the petitioner Brennan House, seeking a special permit under 1.10.1 and 3.1.6, authorizing a maximum building height, reading this right, 36-foot, 31 Winter Ave. If we want to look into the detail of that, because that's above our purview. Is, is that, who's representing? Okay.
My name is Gregory Sullivan. I'm an architect for Slate Blue Design, representing Martha Brennan.
Can you speak right into that mic, Joe? I can't hardly hear.
How's that? Should I repeat myself? My name is Gregory Sullivan. I'm an architect. I work with Slate Blue Design. I am representing Martha Brennan for the house at 31 Winthrop Ave.
Sir, do you understand that we only have authority to go to 35 feet?
Well, that's what we're trying to determine how it was measured.
This, we're asking for, to exceed that 35 feet. The house presently is, the existing house is built in the 1920s, and we looked into possibly refurbishing it, but all the contractors told us that it's not doable, not feasible monetarily, as well as applicably to meet the new code. So we're building a new structure, essentially almost the exact same footprint as the existing structure.
Just to interrupt you, the merits of the project aren't an issue right now.
Okay.
The issue is, we can only go to 35. To 40, you have to go before the city council.
We're going to 40.
Right, but our height limit is 30 feet. We can grant height exceptions up to 35 feet. City council does them 35 and above.
All right, because that wasn't made clear to me during the application.
Right, I think there's some confusion, but as I... I mean, I went and looked at and everything, I didn't have a problem, but then when I read the details, we don't have the authority to grant 36-foot height, so.
Do I talk to, do I talk to the building inspector?
Building Department about applying to the city council.
Take this exact same application and refile it with the clerk to go before the city council.
Yeah, sorry about that.
They'll refer it out to their subcommittee and then back to the city council for a vote.
All right, so I guess I'm not going to waste any of your time. I'll step down, and I guess I will make a telephone call.
But you want to go shorter, but yeah.
Is that the only issue? Is he going to have to come back to us?
Yeah, he doesn't have to come back. Everything else is conforming.
Right.
Yeah, you're fine with everything else, it's just that it's above what we can approve Yeah, it's unfortunate.
So does he need to withdraw, Joe, or how does that work? Or is it just a non-application because it's not within our authority?
Right, it was improperly before us.
Yeah, okay.
I'd recommend they waive the fee for him to go.
Maybe pay it, maybe double it back to him.
Okay. We've got one more new hearing, and then we'll get back to the continued. Not properly before us, I guess, yeah. Okay, the petition of James Nicholas and Judy Rose seeking special permit 1.9 and 2.4.4 to alter and expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure, to reconfigure an existing home layout and add a two-car garage at 3 Englewood Road. Hi.
Hi. I'm Judy. Oops, there. There we go. I'm Judy Rose.
You're representing yourself? All righty, so tell us what you want to do.
So we want to add the two-car garage to the existing house. There's a 20-foot setback, which is like 10 to 15 feet. It kind of varies because it's a strange arc, the setback. So the road itself is 10 to 15 feet back from the setback, and then our mudroom addition... Wait, I have it in my phone, the exact measurements here. You probably have it there, but I can tell you, the current house that's existing there is already four feet, three inches into that setback. The porch would be 10 feet. The porch is like the entryway into the house. And then the edge of the addition, the garage, would be 4.4 feet into it. But again, it's still 10 to 15 feet away from the edge of the setback to the road. So it's still pretty far back. Does that make sense?
Yep, no, I understand. So your reasoning, just trying to get oriented here, is because the shape of your lot is so unusual.
Exactly.
Very unusual shape for a lot, and you have an existing home, and this would be pretty much the only place to place this. Are you up above the garage? Are you thinking about multifamily, or what are you doing?
No, it's a rental right now. My son and his roommate live in there, and it's a very small house, the existing house. It's almost like a tiny bedroom with a nursery. So we're going to put the living room and... Well, this would be a second phase. Right now, we're just doing the garage part of it. But the living room and the second bedroom above the garage, and have just the main house just be one bedroom.
Okay.
And then make the nursery the office.
Think you've been clear enough. Any questions by the board to clarify the application? Are we good?
And we did go to all of the abutters as well, and showed them the plans.
Okay.
Just extending an existing non-conformity, right?
Okay, so we'll see if there's any public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Like I say, if you're online, hit your raise hand tab. Anyone on phones, so. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Is there any opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in opposition? None? There'll be no need for rebuttal. Discussion by the board? Ready for motion?
You can make a motion if you want. Petition of Brennan House seeking special permits 1.10... Nope, wrong one, sorry.
James Nicholas.
Yep. Petition of James Nicholas and Judy Rose seeking special permits 1.9, 2.4.4 to alter, expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure, to reconfigure existing home layout and add a two-car garage. I would move approval of the special permit. I think it is creating new non-conformity. I don't believe it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I would move approval of a special permit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Preusi?
I also vote in favor. You've heard our decision. It's favorable. We will write a decision and get it filed to you, and then there's instructions with it, what you have to do before you can build.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we have some two...
Chairman, would you like a motion to continue?
Yeah, we'd like a motion on the Brennan House.
I move that the petition of Brennan House seeking special permits with regard to 31 Winthrop Ave, MAP 230, Lot 28, be continued until our next meeting, July 11th.
Second.
Can I just ask a question? I just probably missed what went on there. Why is he continuing and not withdrawing?
He's going to redraw the house to be under our purview, rather than the time it would take to go to the council.
Sure, sure.
So we've got a motion to continue to July 11th. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Gelati?
Yes.
Preusi?
Yes. You've heard our decision. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. And we'll be back here that night, too, I guess. Okay, now, moving on to our continued hearings. The first is the petition of SS Soler Estate Investments LLC seeking a variance under 1.7 and 3.2.1 footnote 3 for a change of use and to construct a second principal structure, two-family home on a lot at 12 to 18 Plum Street.
Thank you, I'm just waiting to be let in. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions. I appreciate the board's consideration tonight, letting me run that 5K with my daughter. It was very important to her, and we got it done. Get this eye black off, so I'm going to be on Zoom video forever.
Looks like someone punched you.
So I'm not sure if the board has had time to read the memo I submitted at the end of last week, addressing some of the questions. I don't want to take more time than we need, just kind of quickly going through. Again, this was a construction project that was approved by this board once. It expired. It was approved by this board a second time, and then the scope of work changed. The end result is still trying to remain the same. What? Oh, we're not... Sorry, what are we on?
Plum Street.
I'm so sorry, I'm with Parker. I misheard. Parker, I'm sorry. You have to wait. Thank you, guys. All right, let's try this again.
This is a new hearing. This was never...
Yeah, it was continued. I don't think it was ever opened up. All right, I'm still Joel Favazza of Seaside Legal Solutions, still with an address of 123 Main Street, but I'm speaking to you at this moment on behalf of SS Soler Real Estate Investments LLC, owner of 12 through 18 Plum Street, Gloucester. And you'll notice that the address itself even spans four address numbers on that side of the street, because this is basically four lots' worth of property, which you'd find in the neighborhood. So these are actually two parcels that have merged due to zoning purposes. They're both undersized for R-10, and there is an existing two-family structure on one of the lots, so by an operation of law, they've become one property. Applicants before you acquired the locust in 2013, there was a fire, and they rebuilt the property to a like-new condition. And what they're asking to do now is, on the, what was the second lot, build a single-family home. Again, originally, before you, it was going to be a two-family structure. There was some considerable neighborhood feedback that we received, and so we went back to the drawing board, chopped the entire unit off, and basically cut the proposed building in half. New structure will conform with all of the dimensional requirements for a single or two-family home. It is not even at 30 feet above average grade, and it exceeds most setbacks by a wide margin. The only reason we are here is that there's a footnote in the zoning ordinance that says you can't have more than one principal dwelling, building, on the lot if it's a single or a two-family. So you can put two, three families in a lot, and that's allowed. You can put these same three units in a connected building, and that would be okay. But because this single-family won't be touching the other two units physically, there's a footnote that says you can't do that. So we're asking for a variance from that footnote to allow this third unit to stand alone, and as I go through, it makes sense to do it this way where we are. So again, based on the feedback we received from the board, we went from two-family to a one-family. The house itself is going to be 26 feet back from the road. The setback would be 20. It's 55 feet from the right property line. 10 is the requirement. It's 84 feet from the other building on the lot. So even if you put, you know, the 10-foot setbacks, those buildings are supposed to have, it'd be a combination of 20 feet, right? If they're separate lots, we're 84 feet away, and we are below the 30-feet max height. And I also want to point out, the roof ridge runs parallel with the street, so you don't even get to that 28-foot height for another few feet back, right? So at the face of the house, which is 26 feet back, you're more like 20 feet off the ground. And the lot area per dwelling unit still remains one of the highest in the neighborhood. It'll still be, you know, one of the least dense pieces of real estate in that neighborhood. Have as always the plans. Again, you can see the existing two-family, the existing garage with that two-family. Then you see the new square proposed house and the existing garage on the far right. Four plans. It is intended to be a three-bedroom house. Garage on the first floor with a dedicated driveway for that garage. The existing driveway with the existing larger garage to the left will remain, and the existing driveway on the right is likely to be decommissioned. There's also some neighbors who may be interested in acquiring that for parking on their own. But we are going to be maintaining the large parking lot that exists, the large garage that exists, and this house itself would have two spaces for itself. These are the elevations. Again, if you look at the south elevation, the bottom right-hand corner, that is what you would see from the street. You can see the garage door on the right, and again, you can see how the tallest part of the house is pushed even further back. But where that silhouette is standing in the front door is still 26 feet back from the sidewalk, basically. Here's the assessor's data. Here is the GIS data. The picture of the existing two-family. If you came by and did a site visit at some point over the last few months, you'll see the property, with the exception of that garage on the far right that's going to be decommissioned or turned over to someone else. The property is kept immaculately. The house they rebuilt looks great. The driveway is well-maintained, planting is well-maintained. This is a part of the lot, which again, if you didn't know better, you would just assume is a separate piece of property and used to be before the merger doctrine squished it in, and that's the piece of the lot where the single-family home would go. Just the case law explanation. So again, you would think, well, you know, Joel, these lots are pretty darn close to 10,000 square feet. Most of the lots in this neighborhood aren't even close to 10,000 square feet. Why not just get a lot area variance and chop off one of these lots, and then just build a single-family by right? There's case law in Massachusetts that says this board, or any zoning board, cannot grant that type of variance to defeat the merger law. If you could, the relief may have been granted back in 2001 when the previous owner asked for that, but it's a legal impossibility for this board to grant a variance to undo the merger doctrine, so we can't ask for one. So again, that goes to the variance we have asked for, which is a variance from the footnote that says, basically, that if you want these units, they all have to be touching. Again, to be clear, if you look at this site plan, there is, you know, what I would consider an undesirable alternative, where a breezeway connects that two-family to that three-car garage that's there, and then another breezeway connects that three-car garage over to this new house. And at that point, it's one building, and it's just called a three-family, and all we need is 1.8.3 special permit. But again, while I think we could certainly hit those standards, that big U-shaped building that would get created just to avoid this use variance, I think would be much worse for the property, much worse for the neighborhood. And so we are here trying to do the right thing, which unfortunately becomes the harder thing, thanks to that footnote. So we have a use variance standard, which is the normal variance standard plus one extra condition. And so the first one, little enforcement creates a hardship for the owner. So again, my client is maintaining, at this point, the biggest lot in the neighborhood by a wide margin, and he's doing so with two units on the property, one of which he lives in, right? So he has one unit of rental income helping out with this, right? In order to, again, do as I just said, you're either... helping out with this, right? In order to, again, do as I just said, you're either demolishing the building they just rebuilt in 2013, which is silly, or you're making all those breezeways to connect these buildings together and make it a three-family, which, again, is adding extra construction costs. It's disrupting the people who live in the two-family now. And so to, you know, literally enforce and say, "You must do this," creates a hardship. Well, is it hardship relating to the existing shape of the lot or the location of the structure? And, you know, yeah, the shape of the lot is that it's huge, but not quite big enough to be two separate lots. There's also no contiguous parcel of land from which to purchase those missing square feet. So, for example, if there was an oversized lot backing up to it or on the right-hand side, they could go to the neighbor and say, "Hey, I'm 1,200 square feet short. Can I buy, can we go to the planning board A and R this, and I'll buy 1,200 square feet, and we'll be good to go. We'll be conforming." None of those exist, because all the lots around this are even smaller. So no one can afford to give any land up to get this over the finish line for that, you know, 20,000 square feet total. And again, and the structure itself, because the two-family is so far to the left, you have to then, again, create all these breezeways to get over to what is the sensible building portion of the lot. Or, again, you'd have to demolish the rebuilt building that's about 11 years old. And so, again, if you look at this zoomed-in picture, you can see across the street, there's four lots within the width of this one merged lot. And each of those lots has at least a single-family on it. And all we're trying to do is get one more single-family onto this entire parcel. You can also see how many lots that, although they're longer, they are much narrower, how many lots behind the building, you know, also are in this neighborhood, right? So this thing is huge, and we're just trying to get, at this point, a single-family put on that empty piece. But to do that, I need you to also make a finding that granting this relief is not going to harm the public good or nullify the intent of the zoning ordinance. And so, of course, you know, as this board is well aware, we are in a housing crisis, and we're here trying to develop one more piece of housing for the city. We are also in the R10 district. That is the medium-high-density residential. And that says you need 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So in the R10, if you have 6,000 square feet, you can get up to three dwelling units. Now, again, that's if they're all connected. And we do a multi-family. I think the standard goes up to 5,000 square feet, and that'd be four or more units. But even under that higher standard, there's more than enough space for three units as far as the density expected in the R10. And, again, the surrounding neighborhood, as we, you know, were reminded by many of the neighbors, is mostly single and two-family. There are some multis further out toward East Main Street, but it's mostly singles and twos. And so, again, we're trying to fit in with the neighborhood by putting up another single on this empty space. The last standard you have to hit, which is different than a typical dimensional variance, is that you just find there's no other feasible economic use of the property. It can be made by right or by special permit. And so, again, that doesn't mean that no other use is possible, right? So again, we admit that we could build these breezeways, make a big U, and come back as a three-family. But is that feasible, and is that economic? And I'm going to argue that, no, it's not. First off, it's extra needless construction. That's money. That's extra disruption to the tenants in the existing two-family. That's negative money. To leave it alone, as it is, again, is not only flying in the face of what the zoning ordinance says should be out here, but, again, requires this person to be taxed on a much larger piece of land, maintain a much larger piece of land, without the opportunity to receive the income that you would expect from this much land in the R10 district. You can also look through, you know, what are these, you know, what are these alternatives, right? So by right, I could put a school there, city offices, a sewer pumping station, electrical transformers, a commercial greenhouse, a builder tradesman facility. Those are all, you know, a use is allowed by right. And it's not saying that there can't be any use allowed, but like, none of those uses are economic or really even really feasible. This is a dense residential neighborhood on a hill. And so the idea, you go, oh, well, you know, we can't get the use variance, because you could go put, you know, a commercial greenhouse there. That's not feasible, right? It makes no sense on this property. We're in a residential neighborhood. By special permit, yes, we could do a multi-family apartment building, that U-shaped building I was talking about, a lodging house, a hostel, a hotel, a trailer park, a campground, a nursing home, a cemetery, an animal daycare, a commercial parking lot for people who want to walk a far distance to the beach, or a mixed-use. We could retail on the first level and put a few apartments above it. Those are all allowed by special permit. But, again, those are not economic or feasible, especially given the fact that on this property exists an almost brand-new two-family structure, a well-designed and well-maintained landscape situation, and the size of this thing being as sprawling as it is, this is, those may be permissible, but they're not feasible or economic, and, again, not appropriate for the neighborhood. So, again, we're in merged lots. You can allow single and two-families by right on separate lots. If these lots weren't in common ownership, I don't think we'd even have a question if I came in and said, "Hey, I'd like to get a variance on lot area to build a single-family." I think it would have been a two-minute discussion. The only thing is that footnote is getting in our way. Now, there is some neighborhood support. The stars on this slide show you the people that have signed a petition in support of the project. There has been some considerable neighborhood opposition. There are some neighbors here tonight. So the red stars are properties that wrote a letter after the redesign from a single to a two-family. So it's, you know, it's our belief that they understood that the proposed building was reduced by 50% both unit size and footprint, and they still wrote in an opposition. The yellow stars represent properties that wrote letters on the old design, have not written any new letters, but have not, you know, communicated that they have withdrawn their opposition. And there were also a petition that was dated back in April on the old design, and that had a bunch of, you know, some people over on Davis Street, some people out on Sunset Road, you know, Rocky Neck Avenue. And so, again, there's people here tonight, so there may be some speaking in opposition. But we held a site visit. We noticed the entire neighborhood. We held a site visit last Saturday. I almost left at, it was at 10 o'clock, 10:05. No one had showed up. Three neighbors came. I believe it was the Murries from, David Murray from 11 Plum Street, and then the Corbits from 15A Plum Street. 11 Plum is on the blue star. 15A is behind one of the blue stars. So three people did show up to the site visit. None of the people with the yellow stars, the red stars, showed up. One of the people with the yellow star did reach out ahead of time. I appreciate that. I sent them plans ahead of time. Said, "If you have any questions, let me know." I haven't heard from them since. May hear from them tonight. But after about a half an hour with those three neighbors and no one else coming, we called it and, you know, and again, notice was mailed out by my office to everybody who wasn't a butter to make sure that they knew the site visit was happening and knew if they wanted to see the plans there or ahead of time, they could contact my office. And, again, only one neighbor, two neighbors reached out ahead of time, one of the blue stars and one of the yellow stars. So, again, the only relief requested is a use variance from footnote three of section 2.3.1 to allow more than one principal building on the single merged lot. Thank you, as always. I'll stop my share and let the public-
Can you, Joel, can you just put up the site plan?
Oh, sure.
Again, with the note.
Question, while you're doing that, since you're going to three-family, aren't there many other variances that are needed?
So Chairman Parisi, I was with you in our original application to the city was for a three-family with dimensional variances using the fellow three-family setbacks. And we were told, no, this is not a three-family because they're separate building. This was reviewed by, at the time, the acting building commissioner in concert with the general counsel for this city, and we were told, no, this is not a three-family. I even brought up what we did over in Addison Street and School Street, where we had the, you know, it was a three and a five, and we called it an eight-family, even though it was two separate buildings. And they said, nope. In this case, the two and the one are a two and a one, and the only impediment you have to deal with is footnote three. And so we had to redo our application and come back this way.
That was the case. What can you do with the single in the future?
Nothing. It would exist pursuant to variance. So anything that you want to do, the single comes back here.
Couldn't make that a two.
Not without amending the variance.
No, accessory dwelling unit, nothing.
No, again, the way that this board has been treating structures that exist per variance, the variance encompasses the entirety of the design. And so if they wanted to put an addition on it, it would be back here.
What threw me off was when the original application had four units. You were saying that was a two and two?
Yeah, I was trying to call it a four. My first application called it a four, and they said, no, that's a two and a two. Footnote three.
We wouldn't have went for that. We don't think it's in our purview.
In any event, yeah, no, I had a city council application. I all filled out, and they said, no. So anyway, we're down to one now, which is, which is in front of you regardless.
Party?
I have the site plan up. Do you want me to leave it up?
Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
We'll take public testimony. First, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, you hit your button, and we'll recognize you. Anyone speaking in favor? And anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the project, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and then tell us what your thoughts. Online, you hit your raise hand. And opposition?
Good evening. My name is Liam O'Connell from Farrell Smith O'Connell at 27 Congress Street in Salem. And I'm here on behalf of the abutters, correct the abutters, at 22 Plum Street, which is right next door, Thomas Hawk and Kimberly Smith. And I'd like to correct a few things that has been stated. There was, this has been before you, in a different way, about 21 years ago. This application that we're here for right now is essentially a wolf in sheep's clothing. It's the same exact application which was denied 21 years ago. 21 years ago, the applicant tried to get a variance on the lot size for the vacant portion of this lot, and it was denied. And I believe that this decision is, has been included in documents provided to you. But it was denied because there was no hardship. There was no topography, soil issue. It was just lot size, just like tonight. And in that decision, there's also a notation that the ZBA made that there's an infectious invalidity issue with this lot, because the previous estate holder that owned both parcels retained a certain amount of square footage on purpose and created zoning nonconformities when that person sold these parcels out. So there is, there is an infectious invalidity issue that is also here. But I won't get into that today. I won't get into the weeds on that. The point is that this is a wolf in sheep's clothing. This is essentially a variance for a lot size without asking for one. And instead, now the lot has merged, and it's merged because the lots are nonconforming. It merged as a matter of law because these lots are nonconforming, and the merger made it more, or less, nonconforming for the structure that was there, which is the structure that's there today on parcel 33, you know, number 12 Plum. And that structure is a prior existing nonconforming structure. So the idea that they could just add to that structure, but they don't want to, that's not true. They would have to go through a process. They couldn't do that as of right, just add to that structure. So there's nothing, there's, this hardship, there's no hardship that even comes close to the size, shape, or topography of this lot. It doesn't. This is a lot size issue. And the abutters purchased their home well over 20 years ago for a variety of reasons. And one of those reasons, and they may speak with you tonight, but they have, you know, sent written correspondence in to this point. They purchased this home because they did their research, and they realized that the lot that they were buying their home next to was not buildable. And people make decisions based on the zoning ordinance, and they make decisions based on, you know, what the city says about certain lots in relation to zoning. And, you know, the zoning act, the intent of the zoning act is to reduce and eventually get rid of nonconformities. This doesn't meet the intent of the zoning act. All it does is add more nonconformities. And the merger between these two lots does not, does not open this door that now there's all this space. We can add a second dwelling, a second principal structure. I mean, there's a reason why you can only have one principal structure. So to add a second dwelling unit, a second principal structure, that, that is the same exact thing as saying, "I want a variance for a smaller lot." It's identical, and it's just, it's just said in a different way. Only conforming part of the lot, as is today, you know, post-merger, is lot size. That's the only thing that's conforming. The existing structure's nonconforming. It has dimensional issues. There's two nonconforming accessory structures on the lot. So the only thing that's actually conforming right now is the lot size. And if this were to be allowed, we would then be saying, well, lot size isn't that important, and we're going to make it so that this, this is more dense. And, you know, it was stated that there are parcels across the street and in the neighborhood that are, that are dense and are more dense. Well, that's because they're grandfathered, they're prior existing nonconforming lots that are protected. They were built before the zoning act, before the zoning ordinance or the specific that applies to, meaning they were built before legislature, both the city and the state got together and said, you know what, we need to, we need to make lots. We need to make development in a way that it's, it's going to be conforming in some way, and it protects people when they buy their homes against overreach on density, overreach on air and light. And, you know, I know there is a housing crisis, but, you know, this is, this is going to be, if this were to be allowed, this would be a high-end home in East Gloucester. This isn't going to improve, you know, affordable housing in any way. But the bottom line is, they've been here, not, not these applicants themselves, but the previous, previous, previous landowners have been here before for the same thing. And the board then found, found the same, hopefully finds the same issue that you find tonight or determine tonight, that there is no basis to provide a variance. There's, there's no hardship. There's no topography issue. There's no lot. This is a rectangular lot with frontage. I mean, there's no, it's not a strange, odd lot, lot size. So I think that if the board, you know, were to allow this and opening, you know, a little bit of a slippery slope slash floodgate on lot size variances and creating a more dense city, which the zoning ordinance is designed and implemented to protect against. So without that, if you have any questions, I'll take them. But, you know, my clients vehemently oppose this for the same reasons they did 23 years ago, and some. But nothing's changed. So with that, I'd ask you that this proposal be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward?
Hi, I'm Dominique Curley. I live at 15 Plum Street, directly across the street from the property. And I want to say for the record, the applicants are wonderful people. It's really hard for all of us to be here.
You need to, you can't turn away from the mic-
Sorry.
People can't hear you.
I just want to say for the record that the folks that are applicants are wonderful people, and the whole neighborhood has a really hard time opposing. So with that, I just want to call out a couple of things. The first is that the application in its current form still calls out for a two-family to be added. There's been no change to the application. So the application before you tonight is still the same one that was submitted before with different plans. The application that was submitted before was also full of gaps and holes, not calling out, as an example, the 2001 decision. And I just think it's really important that you know what you're voting on tonight, that that application in its current form does not contain the fact that it's a single-family home being added to the property. It's still talked about as a two-family, et cetera. I also want to call out the fact that Mr. Favazza did send out a letter, came a few days before the weekend where he had the meeting. I was one of the applicant, one of the folks that reached out and said we couldn't go, and I know many others couldn't as well. I do know from looking at the file that over 24 separate households have opposed this structure. And so I don't know what the stars were up there and who's in agreement or not in agreement, but there certainly wasn't anything in the file when I looked at it that showed any neighborhood member supporting it. Instead, there's a pretty lengthy list that you probably have in your packets that talks about the folks that are very concerned about it. I, you know, the lawyer that's represented by another neighbor covered a lot of the things that I would have brought up, so I won't restate them. But I do want to call out that it is a small- But I do want to call out that it is a small lot, it is a very dense area. If a car is parked in the street, that is now a single-lane road that you have to kind of arc around to try and get through. It's a very intimate area. And I just feel like it's really important that you all understand why the decision was made in 2001, and think very carefully about why you would divert from it. There are other properties that are, that are owned by the parties that potentially could be built on instead if they feel that they want to offer housing. And also, there are, you know, other, other ways to think about, you know, what they might do to, to leverage that land. So I just wanted to add that in addition to what the council just offered you all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Attorney for City, Parisi, and the, and the board, thanks for having us here. My name is Thomas Hock. My wife Kimberly and I own the property at 22 Plum Street, which was referenced earlier. We are the immediate abutters to 18 Plum Street on its southeast side up the hill. And if I can tell you a little story, this is about two minutes, bear with me, please. We purchased our house in 1997. At the time, we paid $210,000. This price was significantly above market value. We chose to pay a premium for our house for two reasons. First, from every window and from the front porch on the northwest side of the house, we enjoyed a clear and direct view of Gloucester Harbor, including beautiful sunsets. This view was directly across the empty lot at 18 Plum Street. Having this view was a key part of our decision to buy the house at 22 Plum Street. Number two, at that time, as it is today, the vacant lot at 18 Plum Street was undersized and classified as unbuildable. This fact was key to our decision to invest in our house on Plum Street. If we had foreknowledge that a sizable structure would, at some point in the future, be built there, we never would have bought our house at 22 Plum Street. And as the board is aware, as you've heard many times, a similar plan to build on 18 Plum Street was unanimously denied by this board in 2001. And in the intervening years, nothing about the property has changed. It's the same piece of land. So today, with heavy hearts, because we love our neighbors, we oppose this application for two reasons. One, the proposed structure will block our view of Gloucester Harbor and diminish the air and light. It will destroy our enjoyment of the sunsets and westward vista that we have experienced for 27 years. Number two, it will have a negative impact on the market value of our home. Currently, our property, you can check this on Zillow, is $715,900. That's about average for houses in our neighborhood. Homes are, you know, prices are going up. The insertion of this two-story structure on this undersized, abutting property will drive down our property values, thereby disrupting our plans for long and happy retirement in our home. In short, it will cost us money. So with a heavy heart, we must say no to this plan. Thank you for your time.
No? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Natalia Rosenbaum, and I reside at 7 Highland Court, which is perpendicular street to Plum Street. I'm fairly new to the neighborhood. I bought my house in 2021, so I don't know my neighbors super well, and I wasn't, I wasn't notified of this until I had a conversation with Kim, and she told me about it. So I didn't get any letters explaining what was happening until about four weeks ago. And I didn't get a letter from the applicants, you know, inviting me to a meeting. I, I would have been on the list of people opposing, but I just wasn't notified. I am against this mostly because I support my neighbors. I think that their reasons for being in opposition are very valid, as Tom just stated. I also live on a house, my house has, is 1,200 square feet on a lot size that I, I don't honestly know the exact number of my backyard, but it feels like it's almost the size of this lot. And I'm not planning on, you know, seeking a variance to build a whole separate, single-family home. I think I have the size for that, but I'm, I'm not planning on doing that. I, I sympathize with, you know, having some land and, and not being able to build on it, but they bought it knowing that there were limitations there. So I don't really understand that particular argument. The neighborhood is pretty tight. The, in order to go down, to take a car down the street, you have to move over to, if another car is coming up the street, you have to move, and it's, it's a lot of wiggle room when driving. The parking is not great. I think that if this is approved, it's going to set a precedent to, you know, build more. And I, I personally moved to the neighborhood for the peace and quiet. I lived in a more dense area so that it, it would create a less peaceful environment for the neighborhood, and it would change the, the feeling and the integrity of, of the quaint neighborhood that we live in. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Leslie Mitchell. I'm at 17 Highland Street, which is the abutter right behind the proposed area. Well, I have a fence, so I don't have a view of the harbor. I did buy the property knowing that that would not be built upon. It's sort of a nice, clear area, so that was one of the reasons. But I think, you know, with the 21 years ago, expecting the same request for variance, while I understand that times change, that there is a housing crisis, it won't deal with the low-income housing at all. And I think that that's not really the, the point. The point is about being able to build a house on a property that does not have the correct zoning. So if things were to change with the zoning, that might be different, rather than asking for a constant variance on such properties. That's the direction that I would suggest. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying? Questions? I wasn't sure.
No, we're good.
Do you understand my accent? Okay, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Fine, we'll close public testimony, go to rebuttal. None of them was.
So there's a bit of housekeeping. I want to be clear that prior decision that was referenced was submitted with the application, is in the file. I also want to be clear that per this board's rules, we are not required to submit a new application if we submit a new set of plans at least. So we are in compliance with your rules. We're not required to amend the application. The application was complete, applied by the building department, and you've all had it in your hands for some time. Act in the application before you. Go back to that decision. As I mentioned a moment ago, there, there, one big issue there, which is that that ask is different from this ask, and that that ask is an illegal ask. Not, that board, that board could not have granted that variance if they wanted to. The second thing is the result is different. If that variance, assume it was grantable, had been granted, then boom, you have a new lot, and that opens up, you know, by right construction, et cetera, right? That is a different animal than this, which, as I discussed with the chairman a moment ago, is creating something pursuant to a variance on the structure, which then ties that structure down to that variance and cannot be altered without coming here. So it's a different result than cutting that lot, creating an undersized lot that then can still do by right things as an undersized lot, right? Another issue that I'm, I'm kind of feeling here is this concept that this portion of the lot is unbuildable. That is false. This portion of the lot cannot be separated and built on as a separate lot. But there is nothing that would stop, you know, as a parade of horribles example, they could turn the two-family into a single, and they could go build, as long as they're 10 feet off the right side property line, so they're obeying principal building setbacks, they can go build a garage 30 feet tall with 900 square feet of living space on the top and call it an ADU. That'd be a 30-foot sheer wall 10 feet off the right side property line, allowed by right. Okay? You can, you can build a barn over there by right. So the idea that you can't build on this part of the lot is incorrect. Again, if they, you know, radical Horus dies, losing a bunch of money, they could tear down the building that's there now, the two-family, and move it to the clear other side of the property and build up 30 feet as a cube by right. So there is no prohibition on building on this portion of the lot. Again, we could use breezeways and connect that two-family to the garage, to this new building, and then it's not by right, but it's just a 1.8.3 special permit. So there's nothing that says you can't build on this part of the lot. It just says you can't chop this off and make it its own lot. So anyone who made a decision purchasing property around here and was told nothing can be built on that part of the lot were lied to or misled or misinformed. Because these applicants, the owners before them and any owners after them can absolutely build things by right or by special permit on that portion of the lot. And can honestly build things that I would argue would be much more negative for the neighborhood, given the concerns they've stated. And I'm going to pull the site plan back up, and, you know, obviously, the board knows that views are not before them, but I do want to just, you know, address the issue that the neighbor to the southeast had both their attorney and spoke personally. And so I quickly just threw on a blue and a green line to the site plan here. The blue line's a continuation of the front of the house, which again is 26 feet back and is, you know, approximately 20 feet high. So that blue line is extending into their house, so you get an idea from, in that house when they're looking, right? And the green line is the peak of the roof. That's how far back the peak of the roof is. So anyone who's been on Plum Street understands the orientation of where the harbor is with relation to that house on 22. I can't promise anything, but my, my guess here is that I'm sitting in 22, unless I'm in the very back corner, but even maybe then still, I'm probably looking right across the slope of this roof, still down Plum Street toward that harbor, right? Again, this is, this is not a cube. It has been pushed back, even though view is not before you, you know, one of the applicant, one of the principals of this LLC lives on this property and wants to move into this one and open the apartment up that he's in currently. He's not, he wants to, you know, be able to bring his groceries in without getting daggers, right? He was not looking to come maximize the situation at the abuse of the neighborhood. This is a very reasonable, single-family house on a huge lot. And again, many of the, the complaints and opposition that were brought up tonight, I think, are under a false pretense that this area of the, the property can't be built on ever. That's simply not true. We're trying to build on it in the most reasonable, sensible way that unfortunately has a little footnote in a use table that we need a variance from in order to do so. The last little bit of clarification I want to talk about is there was someone who spoke about hardship, although we do believe there are hardships relating to the, the shape of the lot as it relates to the neighboring lots. Hardship can also be about existing structures. And again, there is a recently rebuilt house due to a fire pushed far left. There is a well-maintained multi-car garage, okay? And these are where they are. And this board routinely takes into consideration where on lots existing structures are when considering whether there is a hardship or not. So I've already explained multiple times about what we would have to do to work with these, to connect all these structures together, to make it a quote-unquote "three family." And that in and of itself is a hardship that qualifies under the GZO based on the existing structures, not just the existing lot itself. That was all the points that were addressed as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Question?
Is anybody aware of previous zoning relief offered on this footnote? Granted, specifically the footnote referenced by Attorney for Sup.
My, my memory in the 18 years that I've been on the board, we have... I just want to be careful in, in how I say it. I have no memory of ever granting a variance like this one.
Do we have?
In, in that we would allow a second principal dwelling, basically. I think we've allowed, I feel, I have, I have a memory of allowing a barn in Lanesville at one point. I'm just trying to think. We allowed a bunkhouse with no water and sewer and stuff like that in Anasquam. They wanted to put a second principal building, and we would not allow it. And we allowed it to, because they, they wanted to use it for family. It was a camp. So we allowed a bunkhouse. But to my knowledge, we've never allowed a, a second primary dwelling like what's being asked in this situation.
So the, the thing I see here, though, in the argument, was pretty sound. He, he can build an ADU at a right, separate dwelling.
Only if it's a single family, right? Got to be a single family.
Yeah. He also could attach and build with us, with one of our special permits where the only bar would be substantially more detrimental, a huge addition to this two-family house going clear across the lot. As long as he stayed in the front, you had, maybe you had setback. So I'm, I'm just thinking, is this, isn't this a better proposal for the neighborhood than the alternative? I mean, I know we don't typically look at that, but it just seems like when you go up that street, there's no question in my mind that there were going to be, there were going to be more houses there. I don't know the history. Somebody who owned this house at some point probably had a few extra dollars and bought the second lot and said, oh, great, I'm going to grow vegetables there, or it could have been a fisherman, I'm going to keep my gear there, my lobster gear there, or whatever. A lot of people do that. You see it up Wheeler's Point, stuff where a guy buys two lots. And then no one knew that when all of a sudden it came along and said, well, now they become one automatically. Granted, many builds, again, not necessarily a separate building, but I can see where the proposal would be better for the neighborhood than what could happen.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I mean, I, I think this is a, a reasonable request for the use of the land. I mean, I think, I, I understand what people are saying, like, it doesn't conform. Well, seven out of 10 houses in the city of Gloucester don't conform to our zoning ordinance. Our whole purpose of, of this board is to grant relief from the zoning ordinance, taking as our charge, one of our charges is to make appropriate use of land and the, you know, most economic use of land. And, you know, we look for guidance to those things, to our housing production plan, which is telling us we need more housing, to our, you know, community 2000 plan. So even after this house is built, this house is going to have more living space around it, more open space around it than most of the houses on that street. So I think when you weigh all of the givens, that is there a better economic use of this property? Well, you could put a nursery school there. Is that a better thing for your neighborhood? You could, I mean, this is a residential neighborhood. They're asking for a residential use. I, I think it's a very large lot for this area. I don't think putting a modest, single-family home on it is an unreasonable request. And I do think that they've demonstrated in Gloucester, where that existing structure is located limits their ability to put a multifamily use, which in the R10 district, medium-high density, I mean, you know, three-family, multifamily use is appropriate, you know, where appropriate. So I, I personally am going to support this application. I think that... I think the applicant has demonstrated a hardship. I think that there's, I understand the pain of losing the view, but we can't protect views that's not within our purview. And I just think the applicants are making a reasonable ask, so I'm going to support it.
So we're not a precedent-setting board, Catherine, but there's always, for me personally, there's always sort of a moral imperative, I guess. I don't know if that's quite the right word I want, but... So you don't have any concern that we're... I don't know, just sort of changing... I personally am not opposed to a single-family house on a lot this size, so I don't have an issue with that. I have an issue with, or my concern is that we're... This is a, this feels like a first for me. I remember denying, I don't think you were on the board. This was a long time ago. I won't mention this, I'll call him Dan, I won't mention his last name, but I remember denying an application to put a second principal dwelling on a lot. I'm pretty sure it was in East Gloucester somewhere. And there was a very strong, compelling reason to do it, and we didn't do it because it was simply, it was a second principal building on a lot, and this footnote, it wasn't allowed. So I feel like if we grant this, I guess my concern is that we're sort of turning a corner. I feel like we've never done this before. That's my biggest concern, I think.
But, Michael...
That it's not a bill, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think when I was first on this board in the 2000s, we would grant lot-size variances before the courts instructed us that we couldn't do that. So we have granted, I mean, our role is to grant relief from the zoning ordinance wherever an applicant with a reasonable proposal seeks relief. So I'm not really worried about granting a variance from the footnote in 2.3.1. If it's in the general context of the zoning ordinance, this proposal and this project is reasonable and makes sense in terms of reasonably using land, promoting housing, promoting, you know, economically viable uses of land. So I'm not concerned. I feel comfortable with it myself.
Okay, yep.
Are we yet to discuss, or are we ready to motion?
I will make a motion if you like. On the petition of SS Sala Real Estate LLC seeking a variance for a change of use and to construct a single, a second, single-family dwelling on a lot at 12 to 18 Plum Street, I would move approval of the relief requested.
Before I second that, can I just ask, Catherine, are we conditioning, is this understood, or are we conditioning that this single-family house can never be a two-family, or never be a three-family?
Have to come back.
I'm sorry?
Would have to come back for relief.
Can you get your mic a little closer, Joe?
I'm sorry, yeah. It would have to come back for relief. He couldn't make any, he couldn't, like you can as a matter of right on another lot, go two-family. That wouldn't be the case here. We'd have to come back to amend.
Can we, can we condition that this can, that in perpetuity, this can only be a single-family? Are we, can we legally condition that?
Yes.
Yep.
Would Joel's, would the applicant consider that condition?
Yeah, that condition would be fine to say that this relief is granted to this remaining a single-family.
I would accept that amendment to my motion, Michael.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made, slightly amended from the original, and seconded to allow the variance on the footnote to, under 1.7 and 3.2.1, subsection 3, instruct the second principal structure. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prese?
I also vote yes. You've heard our decision is favorable. Do I have the most current site plan in the file? Okay, yep, we're good. Thank you. Okay, our last hearing of the night is another continued hearing on the petition of T&amp;J Real Estate Investment LLC seeking to renew, modify a special permit under 1.9.3 and 2.4.5 to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home for by-right conversion to two-family use at 6 Parker Court. This hearing, we had continued for asking some additional questions. And I know Attorney for Vazza had provided us with a memo, legal memo, whatnot about it, which I know the board was, has received. Is there anything you want to touch on?
So again, for the record, Joel Favazza, he said Legal 123 Main Street. The last conversation we had, I think there was some hang-up on the issue of good cause. And the two distinctions I made in the memo, I'm going to make again, is that the good cause question is not, did he have good cause to demolish the house? It's, do you have good cause to amend the permit? And I would say, you know, it's a physical impossibility to not amend this. But secondly, if you wanted to do the analysis kind of outside of it, of like, did he have good cause to demolish the house? We've tried to provide you a more succinct timeline, backed up with all the records we could get on this, showing that the applicant was in communication with the building department throughout this process, did call the departments like DPW and the Health Department as the building was coming down, and tried, that afternoon, as the building was coming down, he made the, you know, unilateral call to take the rest down, made two calls to inspectional services to try and say, "Hey, listen, this thing's got to come down." Didn't get through. But again, the records show that he was in contact with inspectional services throughout, called other departments. And again, speaking, it's tough because the building inspector since changed. At the time, it was still Donald Ballinger was the guy, you know, kind of making the call, saying, "No, I don't need to come out and inspect it." You know, that's the longer the person we have here. But regardless of all that, it goes back to what is the standard and what is the end result, and whether this is treated as a new application under 2.4.3 and 2.4.5, or considered a modification. It's still the, will the end result be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was previously there? And I would say the answer was no the first time the permit is granted. The answer was no the second time the permit is granted. And the answer should still be no this third time, because it is the same result. It just got there, an uglier.
Well, I certainly appreciate the additional information. It has allowed me to agree. I mean, we want to see a building put there, there's no question. But you did provide the information that sort of justifies the need, the reason, the good cause. So I certainly changed, come around to my, personally, to support getting this moving again. Other discussion?
Yeah, well, I appreciate the information too. And I've given some good thought to Michael's comments at the last meeting. And I do realize a lot, I'm rather unhappy with the way this building came down and, you know, caused some public health concerns, and really not. But I, all in all, I don't want to see this lot vacant either. I still don't think it's a, I mean, I thought it was a reasonable structure the last time. I think it's a reasonable structure this time. I think if there is any, I also gave some thought to what our legal counsel said, and one of the things in our memo was, you know, we do have a duty to offer a remedy. So with all of that in mind, I am ready to vote for this. I will echo what Michael said last time. I will not give any other relief to this piece of property. This gets no breaks. It was really kind of bad form on his part, but I leave that to other departments, Board of Health, DEP, Building Department, whoever they may want to deal with this bad behavior in taking the building down, or not properly taking the building down, so... But I do appreciate that memo. It took me a while to work through it, Joel, but... I'm not sure I agree with you that our good cause isn't related to what happened to the building. I mean, is it good cause we amend it because there's no building anymore? But we ignore why there's no building out there anymore? But anyway, that aside, I am ready to vote for this application.
Okay, we have a motion on the application for 6 Parker Court.
But this is just to modify the existing special permit to include demolition and...
Include a 2.4.5, yes.
On the petition of T&amp;J Real Estate Investment LLC seeking to renew or modify a special permit to allow for the demolition and replacement of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home for a by-right conversion to a two-family at 6 Parker Court, with the understanding that this structure's going to be the exact same as the one that we granted relief for before, I would move approval of modification of the special permit. I think there's good cause to allow for demolition of the building. It's already happened. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to modify to 2.4.5.
So just a quick question. So, yeah, so we have modified, so do we have full modified plans, Joe, that are being stamped?
Yeah, that was in the application. It's the same plan that's going to be stamped again.
Okay.
Roll call. Oh, yes, go ahead, Ron.
I was not present for the initial hearing, so I cannot vote.
Right.
Do we have?
We have four.
Do we have a quorum?
Roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Prese?
Yes.
Heard our decision's favorable. Make that argument again in a couple of weeks.
All right.
Okay, any board discussion or any questions? So our next meeting is also going to be here. Everything blew up in City Hall, I guess, so...
I will be absent on the 11th. Yep.
All right, so we'll make sure everyone, Peter will be here and everyone. So we can have a quorum. We do have the one continued, and we have, I think there's only four on the agenda. Did we get packets tonight? Packets are on the end of the counter. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Prese?
Yes, we are officially adjourned.